Roll call, please.
Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
Commissioner Benson?
Here.
Commissioner Freitas? Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
And Commissioner Lazar?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to approval minutes for our regular meeting as well as our special meeting on 10/23. Hopefully everyone had a chance. Oh yeah, salute to the flag. It's moving right along. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So approval minutes for our regular and our special minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of 10:09 and 10:23.
I'll second that.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We will move on to oral communications. If you are here to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, now would be the time to do that. I don't see anyone on Zoom or here, so we will move on to our new hearing for F1, The Tasty Hub.
Our assistant planner, Penelope Ponce, who I don't know if you've met yet, is presenting tonight. You want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Penelope Ponce, the new assistant planner here at the city. I'll be presenting today. Happy to see and meet all of all of you. Okay. Welcome. Just a second. Hide floating video control. Oh shoot. Hide video panel. Sweet. Let me make sure that this works. There we go. Please silence all cell phones.
You're gonna fit in around here.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. I'm Penelope Ponce, and I will be presenting The Tasty Hub Restaurant and Commissary Kitchen. The applicant is requesting approval for a coastal development permit, a conditional use permit, and design review to enlarge the existing Chalet Restaurant into The Tasty Hub Restaurant and Commissary Kitchen. The Commissary Kitchen will serve food trucks, and the food trucks will be stored and potentially operate onsite. Here is a bird's eye view of the project location. It is located along Fifth Street, also known as Highway 101 North, is between T and U Streets, and is south of Fourth Street. The site is surrounded by a variety of commercial service uses. The property shares a block with Silverline Tree Service, a Subway sandwich shop, and the now vacant Annie's Cambodian Cuisine and Sizzlers. The Subway, Annie's Cambodian, and the Sizzlers will soon be demolished so that two new drive-through restaurants can be constructed. There is also a Renner gas station, the Shaping Fin Surfboards, and Sea Drift Inn. Across U Street to the east is a FedEx Office Store and two vacant storefronts that were previously Weight Watchers and B&amp;B Color Salon. The project is located inside the coastal zone. It has a general service commercial land use designation and is located in the Service Commercial Zone District. The existing building was constructed in 1968 and was called The Swiss Restaurant. In 1980, the Chalet Coffee Shop moved in and operated for 40 years before closing in 2020. The property was then purchased in 2021 by new owners who started the permitting process for the Sip Cafe Restaurant, but then they decided to sell their property in May 2023 to The Tasty Hub applicant. The original restaurant is 1,299 square feet with a 153-square-foot attached storage addition, contains a pole sign on the corner depicting Sip Cafe, and has 22 parking spaces for customers and employees. The applicant will keep the existing foreplan in the front of the restaurant, but proposes to demolish the 153-square-foot storage addition on the north side of the building and build a 256-square-foot addition in the same place with exterior finishes and roofing that will match the rest of the structure. The applicant also proposes to alter the existing parking lot configuration to provide a gated area for food trucks in the northwest corner of the parcel where the trucks will be stored, maintained, and cleaned. After this gated, after this area is gated off, there will be 17 parking spaces remaining for customers and employees. In addition, the applicant is proposing to utilize an existing pole sign for the restaurant and commissary kitchen, and therefore an administrative sign permit is also required. The sign permit will be processed separately under Administrative Sign Permit 23-10. Restaurants are a conditional use in the Service Commercial Zone District requiring a conditional use permit. Projects requiring a use permit also require a coastal development permit. Although the site has historically been used as a restaurant, the previous restaurant was legally non-conforming use that had not been, that had not obtained a CUP or associated CDP. Whenever a non-conforming use has been abandoned for a continuous period of 90 days or more, which is the case for this project's site, the non-conforming use loses its legal non-conforming status, and the use of the site or structure thereafter must conform with the regulations for the district, which thus requires the new restaurant to obtain a CUP and CDP. Design review will also be required since the project is located within the design review area, and the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing attached storage structure and construct a slightly larger attached storage structure on the north side of the building. Mobile vendors and commissary kitchens are principally permitted in the Service Commercial Zone District. Principally permitted uses at this location are exempt from a coastal development permitting pursuant to Eureka Categorical Exclusion Order E-88-2. Therefore, no discretionary review is required for mobile vendors or commissary kitchens. These uses were analyzed to the extent that they'll affect the proposed restaurant conditional use, including how food trucks will affect onsite circulation and parking availability. For design review, the planning commission must determine whether the plans for the proposed restaurant will be inharmonious with the surroundings or will have adverse effect on the prop, the value of property or improvements in the vicinity. The property contains an existing 1,299-square-foot restaurant with a 153-square-foot storage addition on the northeast side of the building. The existing addition is proposed to be demolished and replaced with a 256-square-foot addition. The front of the current building has red brick cladding, a blue roof trim, and window trim, wood shingle roofing, while the back of the building includes a blue metal A-frame roof and light blue wood cladding. The applicant proposes to paint the brick cladding gray, metal A-frame tan, replace wood shingles on the front of the roof with tan-colored metal roof or asphalt shingles, paint the roof trim and window trim dark gray, paint the wood cladding tan on the northeast and west side of the building, and paint the wood cladding on the south face A-frame gray to match the brick. The applicant has decided to keep the existing outdoor lighting, and a condition has been added requiring dark sky compliant fixtures if the applicant chooses to replace the lights in the future. The applicant, or the new storage addition, will have brick cladding and a metal roof to match the material and new paint colors of the rest of the building. The applicant proposes to add a six-foot-tall wrought iron fence to create a designated food truck parking area in the northwest corner of the property. They also propose to install a four-foot-tall chain link fence along the north property line. Overall, as described in the staff report, the project as condition is consistent with the general plan, zoning code, and local coastal program. Staff recommends the planning commission hold a public hearing and adopt a planning commission resolution approving the proposed restaurant and commissary kitchen with conditions. Staff has prepared a suggested motion, but I will stop screen sharing to allow for discussion. Staff as well as the applicants are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. It's lovely to meet you. Appreciate the presentation. We'll bring it to the commissioners for questions for staff.
Assistant Planner Ponce, welcome, and good job. And if you bring, seen by somebody supervisory out there, good training. It's paying off. Okay, yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Is there gonna be any changing to the ingress or egress or parking as that's operated in the past?
It's going, the ingress and egress is going to operate the same. The parking is going to change. They had 22 spaces, but with that gated storage area, there will be 17 spaces. Now, the site only requires eight uses, so if they decide to add more food trucks in the future or change any reconfiguration, I think they can still have enough parking to meet the requirements and have a safe circulation onsite.
Okay. Was it, in the application, how many, how many people can be served at a time? What's the capacity of that, that space?
Um, I believe that's more of a building question for the capacity. I believe the applicants did put that, but I didn't check it because that is the building department's realm.
All right. Only reason I'm asking is as someone who used to go to that restaurant from time to time, oftentimes the parking lots were full, and every table didn't seem to be full.
Yes.
Another question. Is a commissary kitchen different than a mobile vendor? Is there something I should understand about that language?
A commissary kitchen serves a mobile, mobile vendor. So a commissary kitchen is where they do all their food prep and preparation for their food truck, and then they put that food into their food truck, and their food truck can go elsewhere. But it's more of like a home base for them to prep and clean and get ready for them to go off onsite to other locations.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, it's the county DHHS. They require all food trucks to have a home base commissary kitchen, and there's a real need for more space in the county.
Good to know that detail. I heard you say that trucks will be cleaned. Does this include washing? Washing the outsides?
Yes.
Like with soap, like?
Yes.
Car wash?
Yes. And I believe it was either Public Works or the Department of Environmental Health required a special slope of the parking lot, so it goes into a special container area, which would be connected to the grease interceptor. So everything, all the discharge and everything will be directed to a designated location underground, so it can be filtered out before coming into the utilities, like the water and sewer and things like that.
Good. Yeah, I was curious about the stormwater runoff, and thank you for clarifying. Is that in the design plans? Is there a detail that I missed?
There was a conversation in the referral comments section. If you've read through all those, there was a bunch of emails.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Greetings. Thanks for your good presentation. I noticed there was some discussion in the staff report about the quote-unquote alley that it looks to me is a part of the neighboring parcel to the north. And I guess, is there any likelihood, in your opinion, that that will be something that could be used by the property? Because you were saying that there'd be a fence along the northern boundary that would be the alley side?
The applicant would have to obtain an easement from that property owner to the north. That is a civil dispute between the two property owners, and that would not involve the city. If they do get an easement, they can bring that to the city, and we can tailor their new site plan to using that alley as access.
So we're fairly confident at this juncture that it is, there's no easements that-
There are no easements.
Okay. And, okay, and then I guess the only other question I-
That we're aware of, right?
Yeah, right. And approval tonight wouldn't preclude that from, that would be a simple administrative modification to like circulation?
Yeah, that's why in condition one, we basically say, you know, the amount of food trucks you can have onsite can be adjusted by submitting an updated site plan, and so that we can ensure that circulation continues to work.
Right.
So that it wouldn't have to come back to you guys.
Right. I think that's all I have at the moment. I might have one later, but I think, I think that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
This may be a question for the applicant, but is the parking just for three, and the idea is that the commissary can serve more than three food trucks, or is the whole design around three food trucks?
That is a good question. I believe the commissary kitchen could serve more than three food trucks. We just can only accommodate three food trucks onsite, given the arrangement of the parcel and the building and the parking and the circulation. But I don't see any, any problem with them serving more food trucks that are actually onsite.
Yeah, because as, as pointed out, it is quite a need, so it could be a win-win. Director Kenyon, I get the non-conforming part of this, but why is this a conditional use at all in this zone, and is that slated to continue?
No, we want to, when we do the LCP update, we're gonna propose that restaurants be principally permitted. My assumption is because they generate more traffic, that's why they were treated as a conditional use historically.
All right. I appreciate it.
It did look like Caltrans had some issues or concerns with the parking, and those have been mitigated with updated plans for ingress and egress.
Yeah, so Caltrans, their staff collects recommendations, and, and also, so their letters to us are a little bit tough to navigate because they have certain things that are requirements, like getting an encroachment permit if you're working, and then there's other things that are best practices. And one of the things they're saying is, if in the future this property redevelops, we'd prefer the building to be on the corner, which we would too, if, if it was being proposed to be redeveloped. And our inland code, and hopefully soon our coastal code will require that for new buildings, that the parking be behind the building. But that's a recommendation for future times. They, I'm trying to think through what all their comments were. They, their concern with circulation was, yeah, backing up from the western side into the access. And they, but they didn't require it to be fixed at this time.
The only thing they required was if there was gonna be any work performed within their right of way. So the only work that would be performed in the right of way is when they're replacing their sign, that they obtain an easement to work within the sidewalk area. But everything else was recommendations. They recommended an ADA compliant walkway from the sidewalk to the building. But after speaking to our building guy, there's like a percentage of cost associated with that, and like they didn't meet that in order to make them and require them to have that ADA walkway. But yeah, there's just three recommendations, the ADA path of travel.
Yeah, I'm remembering it now. It was saying if it redeveloped in the future, they should fix onsite circulation.
Yep. And then also widen the sidewalks. But those were recommendations. The only requirement was to get an easement, or encroachment permit rather, for the sign, if they're gonna be working on the sign or within the sidewalk area.
Talking my memory. So I think this is for the director. Would you say that while they are recommendations, the Caltrans ones, I read their recommendations as things that the commission could condition as part of the project, in particular, if we take the two separately. One is a larger sidewalk, and the other is a path of travel to the entrance from the sidewalk. That, I get what assistant planners saying that under the building code, there's thresholds for when you are required to make accessibility improvements, but as this is a conditional use, we have the right to require conditions if there's a nexus to the proposal. And I think the, in the report, there was a kind of reluctance to, to do the sidewalk improvement or require that automatically because it seemed out of proportion to the, the proposal or the request. Is that the way I read it? Or is that really-
Correct. Because of the, the valuation of the project, completely replacing the sidewalk just seemed too, too big of a ask. Also, in our municipal code, we have triggers for, which we've gone through before, for different types of upgrades, and they, you definitely, for this type of project, when there's a use permit, you're required to bring your sidewalks up to, to current standards in terms of making sure they're ADA compliant and not, and fixing any, you know, cracks and stuff, but, but not expanding them to eight feet. That's not a triggered thing in our code currently. And we, we conferred with Public Works. We gave Public Works Caltrans comments, and they felt like the sidewalk thing was too much for this project. You know, also, we thought about how critical it is to just, to, to fill vacancies in this part of the city, and we don't want to kill the project by requiring too much, because we did see those DEH comments come in, and we realized it's gonna be quite expensive for them to add the grease interceptor and all the other requirements they have to meet. We did say that the ADA access from the sidewalk to the building, we would be requiring that unless it, it goes over a 20% valuation threshold, which, so if, if all the ADA upgrades they need to make end up being over 20% of the cost of their project, they wouldn't have to do the, the access way.
Right. But that's more automatic under the building code, right? Or is it the municipal code?
Yeah, the building code says that. I mean, like you're saying, it's a conditional use permit, so we could require other things beyond what the building-
I'm not saying I want it. I just wanted to see if I had that right, just because I think I don't want to lose sight that we do have a certain amount of authority to-
Yeah, if we, if we feel like the project is creating an impact, that needs to be addressed.
I think the biggest concern when I have with ADA is that, and it, I gotta admit, the 90-day expiration of a grandfathered use or non-conforming use is pretty tight. It's two years in the county, just to put in.
I know. It's also only 180 days on our inland code, and there's been frustration with that. So that could be something that we rethink on, on both sides of the coastal zone boundary. So you have a two-year one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And, and just to kind of talk that through, right, if somebody was managing a non-conforming commercial use and said, "I want to do some tenant improvements," and they took more than a month and a half to, and they were out of operation during their renovation, they could theoretically lose their non-conforming use and have to come in for a use permit. Is that how we would interpret that code?
I don't think I would interpret it that way.
Okay, so like a business closing versus a business suspending it for a purpose or something. Yeah. But nevertheless, that's the situation we find ourselves. So yeah, I do find myself reluctant, given the context that's triggering the use permit, but we'll get into deliberation later. But I think the path of travel isn't a concern to me because there really is no way from the sidewalk safely without going through areas that are driven by vehicles on any of the sidewalk front edges. You're gonna be negotiating a, a drive, driveway situation, which is not really a safe situation for someone in a wheelchair. But there's not an easy fix, so. Okay, thank you.
I would like to add on that note. Caltrans is updating the driveways along 101 to have ADA compliant standards, so wheelchairs can, yeah, the slope will be better. I know ideally it's still not safer because it's 101 and people drive like crazy down there. But that is, they are gonna be working on that in the next few months. And also, I spoke to Jesse Robertson, I believe, at Caltrans, the senior planner there, transportation planner, and I talked to him about all this, and he said they're really just providing all these recommendations because sooner or later they are gonna become requirements, and they are just giving us kind of a heads up on like what's to be expected in the near future. So all these, even though the recommendations, it's kind of just priming us to get ready and start thinking about how we are going to implement these into our future projects because they will become requirements soon.
Yeah, I, I heard from Caltrans that they might have the ability to trigger upgrades by any new tenant or new owner would have to come to them to get a permit for their access onto the highway, and at that point, they could require them to change their access onto the highway.
If I, maybe Director Kenyon can confirm this, but I think, right, just because there's thresholds that set ceilings for investment in terms of ADA improvements tied to the tenant improvements or whatever, you're still vulnerable to being sued by someone who wants to invoke ADA if you don't fully comply with ADA. So it's nothing, even if we waive it, if they get in the crosshairs of somebody who targets them for out of compliance, there's nothing they can do to fight that. So, but, okay, I think we've explored that. That's helpful for me, though, and we don't see a lot of, we've seen two now in the last five months, I think, where we had an expired use. So, thanks.
Okay, I will open it up for public comment. If the applicant is, looks like she's here, and so if you'd like to speak, you would have first right to do so. You have three minutes. You're not required to speak, so if you don't want to, you certainly don't have to. Okay, might you be willing to answer questions if the commission had questions for you? Fantastic. Looks like there's a hand raise from Hannah Joy on Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. Hello to commissioners and staff. I'm Hannah Joy. I'm representing AEDC, Arcata Economic Development Corporation, and I'm just here to speak in support of Gabby and her project as, as her lender. And I just have to say, I love these staff reports. Great job. I can always learn a thing or two from these staff reports. They're so pretty. So AEDC, we're, we're just proud to be a part of this. We're helping finance this project, and we're very proud of Gabby as an asset to our community, and we're looking forward to welcoming The Tasty Hub. And we do get regular business loan applications for food trucks here at AEDC, so that's something that we're pretty familiar with. As far as a need for more commissary kitchens, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of information going back and forth about, about what it takes to become a food truck, but that's definitely a need that we have here for more commissary kitchens for them to go to. They're supposed to go there at night. But yeah, so Gabby, she's, you know, she's very active as a business owner. She's, she provides many services to our town here. She volunteers. She's with the Chamber of Commerce. She's got the Taste of Bim and the Grind in two locations. So she's really the kind of borrower that we look for and are proud to support. And so we're really hoping that this project can be completed, you know, with as short of a runway as possible and as few hurdles as possible for Gabby. We'd like to see her, see this be as affordable as possible while, while integrating with all of the many requirements of this particular location. We definitely want to see it be within those bounds, but we need to get her doors open to the public as soon as possible as, as a business. And please don't make her widen the sidewalks. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Hannah. All right, anybody else? I don't see any other hands raised. Well, I will close the public comment and bring it back to commissioners for motion and discussion.
I'm ready to entertain a motion if you want to bring this light up.
Director Kenyon, can you please bring up the motion?
Okay, I'm ready to entertain a motion, and there's one right there.
Okay, there it is.
Okay, I move the planning commission adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from SEQA and conditionally approving a conditional use permit, design review, and coastal development permit for a restaurant, and-
Commissary Kitchen at 1935 Fifth Street.
And Commissary Kitchen at 1935 Fifth Street.
I would be happy to second that.
Any discussion needed?
I just wanted to say, I think this is a good project. I appreciate- I just wanted to say, I think this is a good project. I appreciate the staff discussion, though. It's helpful for us. And and, yeah, I'm glad to see projects like this come forward, and it's important to acknowledge that this infrastructure we have in the community, even if it's nonconforming, you know, is valuable, and repurposing it and renovating it is a real asset, independent of any other requirements that get put on top of a project. So I I do not lose sight of that and appreciate the decision to move this project forward. So happy to vote for that.
I agree, commissioners, our rights are needed. It's infill and then takes care of an ISO, and I am impressed that you continue to want to open new spots. So kudos to you for your energy and hard work. I'd be.
Yeah, I would just like to agree with that. Thank you for continuing to work in the community. I'm a fan of Taste of Bim, and I also want to say, I appreciate the staff's, both the presentation and and welcome to you, Assistant Planner Ponse and Director Kenyon. I was also appreciative of the thoughtfulness of, you know, thinking about what makes this make sense financially and helps to fill in that area. So nice job all around. I feel good about this.
All right, we can do a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Aye.
And Chairman Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations. Looks like you have a lot more hoops to jump through. We wish you a lot of luck. That was a really good one, guys. Thanks. It looks like no more public hearings and no old or new business unless the commissioners have something they have on their plate? No? We'll move to staff report and communications for the cannabis update.
We're gonna have to postpone that, because our cannabis project manager is sick.
Yeah, they're in half the other county. So yeah, you're good. Okay, until the next meeting?
Yeah, till next meeting.
Moving right along, let's name the neighborhood, shall we? All right.
Hello again. I'm Penelope Ponse, and I'm here to discuss the Planning Department's newest project, Name Your Neighborhood. What is the Name Your Neighborhood project? This is a project organized by the planning team, and we will be collecting neighborhood names from the community with various forms of outreach, with the hope to establish official names for the city's neighborhoods. Why is the city working on this project? Eureka does not have official neighborhood names. This naming effort is an initiative identified in City Council's 2023 strategic vision. One of council's key strategic themes this year is community pride, and the council believes that having residents in Eureka name their neighborhood is a great way to create a sense of community character and pride. The city understands that no one's going to have better names for their neighborhoods, their boundaries, and sense of character than the people who reside there. The planning team is currently working on collecting neighborhood names for the city. I will discuss our collection methods in the next slide. The data collection period will end in December 2023. The deadline's flexible, and we can always extend the data collection period to gather more information if needed. The next phase is outreach and data, or, excuse me, after outreach and data collection, the planning team will draft a map with the most popular neighborhood names and boundaries received during Phase One and present it to the community for feedback. The draft map will be available for community input in early 2024. Once the community has had a chance to see and comment on the draft map, the proposed neighborhood names will be presented to City Council for approval. The final phase is to officially establish the new neighborhood names. The city will begin referring to the different parts of Eureka by their neighborhood names, as well as update the maps to include those official names. We're hoping to get some feedback on creative ways to use the neighborhood names, such as displaying them around town, either on placards above the street signs or banners, things like that. So we've created a website that's part of the city's new Talk Eureka platform. This website has interactive tools that allows people to name their neighborhoods by using maps and discussion posts. The site also contains additional information on the project's overall goals. I'll show you that website after this, and, oh, I forgot to pull it up on there. It'll be a minute, but I will show you the website after this.
Do you want me to pull it up right now?
No.
Oh, good.
Just wait.
Sorry.
We've also been reaching out to the community and talking to them directly. The planning team has been tabling at the Eureka Friday Night Markets. We've had a giant map and markers and been asking people at the market to draw boundaries around their neighborhood and give it a name. Tabling's been pretty beneficial, because we've collected some really good names and ideas, and we've got to hear the community's excitement about the project, as well as hear their stories about living in Eureka. We've also made flyers to put out around town on bulletin boards and inside local businesses to help spread the word about the project. We've created a couple of giant laminated posters with a map of the city and added directions asking people to name their neighborhood on the map. We've placed these posters in the lobby at City Hall and outside City Council chambers. I don't know if you guys saw that big map out there, but if you live in Eureka, please name it to Name Your Neighborhood. Both the flyers and posters have this QR code, which can be scanned, and will take you to the Name Your Neighborhood website for more interactive tools and information. So here's the QR code and the link to the website, and Director Kenyon's pulling it up. Maybe. I'm sorry, that was my fault. I didn't load it before the meeting. Okay. So this is our webpage. If you scroll down a little bit, there's just the general bio information about the project, and right below, that's the map where people can drop pins and name their neighborhood and give us a description and kind of tell us why and what makes their neighborhood unique and why they chose that name. I believe we've gotten over 30 responses so far, and this has been live for a couple weeks now. And the city has been, the city communication services has been posting on Instagram and Facebook, and I've got a report of how much feedback we're getting, and it seems like most of our feedback's coming from the Facebook links. So I think social media is really helping. To the right is just our planning page and planning information. So if anybody has further questions, they can contact us about the project. There's an FAQ section. Underneath that is our state informed buttons. People can subscribe to that, and they'll get email updates as our project moves along through its different phases. Right below that is a bunch of links to articles, other cities that have done Name Your Neighborhoods, the Lost Coast Outpost article about the neighbor neighborhood projects and just resources. There's also a links to the City Council agendas for when this does go to City Council. And right below that is a bunch of photos that I've taken of the maps of the neighborhood names that we've collected. That's just to give people an idea of what names are already out there, maybe give them some naming inspiration. And right below that is our project phases, which I just previously described, but that's for the community to see what phases were of the project that we're currently in. So that is our project and our website. It's a new way for us to reach out for the community for input, and if you have any suggestions on how we can make this website better or how we can reach our community, I would love to hear it.
Well, I just want to say that I just, I love this project. I mean, it's strategic, it's fun, it's creative. I'm curious about, you know, what are the, what are the, are there parameters or standards, you know, like relative to the size or the boundaries?
No.
Is it just kind of wide open?
It's wide open.
A certain amount of words limited? It can't be longer than?
Nope.
I think we'll probably have to think about that once we get the initial feedback.
Pronounceable by 90% of the population. But there's no themes like historic or redwoods or animals or cardinal directions.
Nope. It's whatever the community thinks or wants to do. It's all up to them. I think having a bottom-up approach rather than a top-down approach and having restrictions and parameters, I think it's just better for them to be more creative, and they know their boundaries and community better than us, so.
We did get feedback from the Historic Preservation Commission, though, that it'd be good if we inform people of the historic neighborhood names, so we're gonna add that information, too.
Yeah.
We'll be adding that to our website.
We'll finally decide if it's Booner or Boone. I can't wait to see what happens on the S M I P.
Old timers versus newcomers. Booner or Boone?
Yeah.
All right, Booner. I'm showing my chops.
You got your vote.
I have one selfish question and one slightly related comment. The question is, do you have to be a resident to morally engage with this, or if you own a business in a neighborhood, is that, all right?
There's no way of us telling if you really live here or not. If there's too many people, I'm not gonna go and check addresses and everything.
I think business owner is the same as resident in terms of caring about the name of your neighborhood.
Well, and that actually leads to a second comment. If any of you saw last week, tonight, this week, they're crashing New Zealand's Name Your, the bird of the century.
I voted.
So we could have people from New Zealand crashing the Eureka Name Your Neighborhood thing.
Yeah.
My comment that is actually more related, there was a super interesting, long column in, I think, the New York Times Magazine. It was one of those kind of elite New York things on the neighborhoods of New York, who thinks they live where. And this, it was multifaceted, but the part that really sticks with me is that the rich neighborhood kind of encroaches over time on the poor neighborhood. So, you know, I'll make it up, you know, the South Side of Chicago against the Upper East Side of Manhattan, if they were adjoining, then over time, the real estate agents and the marketers and stuff would be having the Manhattan neighborhood kind of encroach, and over time, that becomes reality. It'll, you know, we won't have that now, but it'll be interesting to see over time what happens with these. I echo Commissioner Benson's enthusiasm for the project. I think this one is fun and feel-good, and we need some of that.
Yep. Thank you.
We needed a feel-good meeting, too, so thank you.
I have just one one more comment. I wonder if it's, would be prudent to include tribes, especially Wiat, you know, Shippo Tippo officers in the in the naming convention, so that we, so that that would, so we were also hearing what Wiat's called some of these places.
That's a really good idea. Well, we should do targeted outreach to the Tippos and the tribes.
Thank you.
I don't want to say, I think this is a great, this is a winner, as far as a campaign and a way to inspire civic pride and investment, and to, you know, kind of rethink the community, which I think is always an important exercise. I'll just disclose that I serve on the board of the Humble County Historical Society, and part of, that part of me thinks that this is an opportunity to kind of reconcile the past with the present and not lose sight of the past in the sense that, like the Historic Preservation Commission is saying, you know, the city was developed over time, started from the waterfront, expanded outward. There were additions to the city along the way. Losing some of that kind of cognizance, it's all there. It can all be put back together, those pieces, but they just, we've lost sight of that, because it just blurs into a kind of cityscape. So I think it's an opportunity to tease out some of that. I don't think we need to have more people, more places with dead white guys' names on them, but I do think to the extent, like the neighborhood I live in was the Marine Heights neighborhood, and it's got the old service station from the Marine Heights, you know, era. Whether that rises to the top amongst my, you know, peers and and residents, that's fine. But but I do think that, yeah, it would be, it may be in the sense of having prompts for people to, that may have heard of a name or didn't hear the name, where they can weigh that, like, do I like that name? I never knew that was what my neighborhood was, but that was the person who subdivided all of this, where my house is, they came up with a name. And and I know, I remember having a meeting years back when I was a planner on a project, and the neighborhood, it was for a cell tower, and they said, this is Rosewood. And it was very clear, like everyone understood, this is the identity of our area, and there was a lot of pride in that. So so, yeah, I think that, to the extent that it's great to leave it open-ended, but it would be nice to use this as an opportunity to connect with some of that history. And I think you can look at the accessory parcel pages throughout the city. There's gonna be breadcrumbs that link back to the subdivision maps. The subdivision maps are gonna have names associated with them, whether it's the Dungen tract or Clark's Edition or whatever. Those might be good things to kind of develop or at least make note of as we move forward.
Do you think the Historical Society would want to help us with like a Historical Society-sponsored map idea that we could promote?
I certainly will be happy to facilitate providing resources to this effort. And also, I would say the Remembering Eureka When Facebook group has got a lot of active members, and I've already spoken with Milt Fagley, who I think should be conscripted, but.
I think as a chair, I can just like establish a a little side project, and then I can dub that to you. It's landed in his lap.
Yeah. So anyways, good work so far. I think you've done a good job of really kind of beating the bushes and building energy, and I look forward to seeing where this goes.
Thank you. What was the name of that Facebook group again?
Remembering Eureka When. That is, yes. I think there's over 5,000 members, if not 10,000.
Oh, wow. Okay, maybe I can talk to the host and put my flyer out there.
Talking to the host.
Oh.
No, no.
Oh.
But I am a member. I could, I could, I'll, I'll, I'll advocate to add you to the group, yeah.
And we already spoke with Historic Preservation Commission, and Chuck Petty suggested that we put links to the old historic maps, and he provided a couple of old maps. So I haven't, I haven't yet put them up there, but I will put them on the link, so people can check those out, too.
And hummaps.org, it doesn't get plugged very often, but it is the county surveyor site for a lot of different things, including recorded maps. So you can download scanned copies of the stuff that lives at the recorder's office. So when you look at the accessory parcel page, and it says Book 10 of Maps, Page 36, you can pull the map right up and download it.
Okay, cool.
It should be a pretty good resource.
Cool. Thank you for all of that.
Oh, I did have one more question.
Yeah.
Is there a potential neighborhood named Cookie Land?
Yes, that is a potential neighborhood name, because Cookie the Dog is known to be barking in that neighborhood and is very famous and popular, and I've talked to people around City Hall, and they know that dog. So that is a contender. It was brought up. Will City Council approve it? We'll see.
It'll be interesting. Okay, great.
I love it.
It's hilarious, Cookie. Especially with the story. The story helps. Cool. Well, I think we can move on to other reports in Communications.
I just wanted to mention that at the last City Council meeting last night, staff presented a report explaining the ballot initiative. And so it's the, I forget what the proponents call it. It's, it's a ballot initiative to amend the city's general plan for 21 parking lots in the Jacob site, Jacob's old school site. And so it is applicable to Planning Commission, because it's amending the general plan and requiring rezoning of of different parcels. So if you're interested, I could provide a report to you as well.
You could do that now, or you're?
Oh, no, not next time.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds.
Or or anytime. I mean, it's not going till next November, so whenever we have a light schedule, we could do it, maybe after the holidays.
Fantastic. Great. All right, adjournment. We're done.